The hours have passed and so I would call this meeting to order just to introduce Carrie and ask her to give us information on our World's Best Workforce report. Carrie Thompson, curriculum director. Thanks.
Well, you had this report for a few days and there's quite a bit of deep embarrassment, I'm not going to read it to you, but I will just pick out some of the main ideas and summarize. The World's Best Workforce is a Minnesota thing and the state gives us goals that we are to meet. We're fortunate in our district that you've chosen to use those goals for our district as well as to meet the World's Best Workforce. So I guess when we get towards the end of the report, it may seem that it's a bit redundant, but we have to follow the format for the report. So I tried to pick out things that the second amendment initially. But on page three at the bottom, these are our goals in our district and this particular report. And I do want to read those because we've got viewers who may not know what our goals are. The district is responsible to ensure that students entering kindergarten are ready for kindergarten in school readiness. We are responsible to have third graders be reading at grade level by the end of third grade. We're responsible to close achievement gaps between all ethnic and socioeconomic groups, economic groups of students. Our students are to be ready for college and career by the time they graduate from high school. And then our goal is to have all of them graduate from high school. Those are the goals of the World's Best Workforce. On page four, there's some data there about each one of those components. In the area of having children who enter kindergarten be prepared, our district has developed a kindergarten reading tool that teachers used to assess each child about two weeks into the school year after they've gotten to know them a little bit. And they're watching for readiness in the areas of listening and speaking, reading, social, emotional development, their physical development, and then their entry level abilities in math, science, writing, and the arts. We learned this last year that about 40% of our children were competent and ready. They have a secure understanding by the time they enter kindergarten. Forty-eight percent of them are partially ready. And there are about 10% who don't indicate that they're ready when they come initially in the school year. I thought it was kind of interesting that the two areas where students scored the strongest overall were in physical development, but also the arts, meaning they can hold a scissor, they can hold art materials, they understand, and they seem to have experiences with artistic kind of things. The weakest area was in the area of reading, and that would be expected. We don't expect them to read when they arrive at school, though there might be a few who can. And the other week on was in the area of listening and speaking. So that creates an immediate challenge for teachers when you have to work on listening. And they do it. The information that we get from this intake is shared back with community preschools. Not all of the children have participated in district programs before that. So it is difficult to ensure that they are all prepared before they come to meet us. We don't have access to all of them. Third grade literacy, we use the state reading test for that. The state average for third graders was 57% of them were proficient. You need 57% of third graders all over the state. We're really reading at the third grade level that would have been expected. Our district proficiency was 67% at Cleveland School and 57 in our IQ Academy. So that one is strong, but still room for improvement. The goal about closing achievement gaps, we continue to have gaps particularly between our special ed students and non-special ed. We look at those two groups. And children who are qualified for free who use lunch and those who don't. And we also have some gaps with our children who are learning English, the English learners. And I think that would be expected if we don't speak the language. It's going to be tough to be competitive with children who do. Moving over to page five in the middle there, the goal of college and career readiness. A good measure that the state uses for that one, an early predictor, is their score on their eighth grade math state test, the MCA. This year, the state proficiency was 57% of children were ready for that. And in our district, our number was 65. The Kennedy Middle School, our eighth graders in this particular building, were 73% proficient and IQ Academy 21%. The other obvious assessment is the ACT, which we offer to juniors and seniors. The numbers here are for seniors, for the graduating class going out. The state composite score was 21.3. That's a scale score. And at the Kennedy School, it was 20.9. On this particular test, for most students, scoring a 21 or higher is considered a good score. For students who want an elite college experience, they really need to score a greater than All students graduate from high school. This one, the state keeps track of four-year, five-year, six-year, and now even seven-year graduation rates, but we're looking at four-year graduation rates. The student who enters ninth grade and then moves through one year at a time and finishes four years later as a senior. But you'll see here that the district score already measured our students for, I think, this is 2017, the graduating class was 74.8%, with the 0.8% of children continuing after that. And then on the next page, page six, you'll see the detail there. The Kennedy School has a graduation rate of 94.2. Our area learning center, about a third of the students, and IQ Academy, 40%. The state has a goal that all schools will have students graduate by 2020, but will have 90% of students, not all. So we're there with Kennedy, but we have work to do in the other two buildings. And it's that particular goal that I believe those two buildings are working on with their Every Child or Every Student Succeeds Act. That's a big deal. We have teachers working on all year graduation.
Carrie, can I just ask a quick question on the IQ Academy? Is that factoring in at some point, they were going to change the law that depending on when the students came in? Is this taking into?
Not yet.
Okay, okay, that's what I was.
This next year, yeah. So what you're referring to is wherever the student has resided the longest in their nine through 12 years, that's where they'll count. So we're getting a lot of seniors in their February or March, and all of a sudden, they're counting on our rate. And in the future, now they won't.
So this number should go.
That would mess up the funding a lot, wouldn't it?
Nope.
If this score goes all squared.
Sorry.
Then we had a local goal this last year of improving communication with parents and guardians and community people. And there are several items listed here that we think are evidence of progress toward that goal. Invitations were sent to parents for parent conferences. They were individually scheduled conferences for students who were in kindergarten through eighth grade. Many teachers have websites. Children who are in intervention programs, they were surveyed for satisfaction, as well as their parents were surveyed for satisfaction. Our principals do radio spots monthly. Mr. Ness has a column in the newspaper weekly. Our fall newsletter is pretty comprehensive and that goes to every resident in the district, not just parents. There have been some electronic resources that have been updated for people to receive communications. School Messenger and Remind are examples of that. The school website, Facebook and Twitter and the social media things are, we've tried to keep close, fresh, and improve where needed. We've broadcasted some sporting events and school board meetings, of course. Those are all ways to communicate. Many teachers use Google Classroom so that they can communicate with parents and students when they're not here. And then we have several advisory boards through our district. There are some listed here, for example, the FACS department, the business department, industrial technology. Those groups all have community advisory groups that bring in parents, but also people who have an interest in those subjects and are a good conduit for us of what the community expects of their school district. On page seven, there's some basic assessment results here, test results. We're kind of like the community of Waukun. We want 76% of our children to be in the top half. And that's our goal. And we succeeded in that in some places. Up the middle of the page, you'll see overall in math. In Mrs. Perkins K12, we had 77.9% of our students who were in the top half. That's just what we wanted. For reading, it was 70.7. And since our goal was 76, of course, we can't say that we made it, but 70% in the top half, that's still admirable. The bottom of the page is third and fourth grade. Their goal was to be 10% higher than the state average. And you'll see here that third grade met that and fourth grade met that, 10% or greater. Guess what I just said is about reading. Math was a 6 and 8%, but not 10. And then at the IQ Academy, their goal was to be equal or exceed the state percentages of proficiency. And the areas where we met that all had to do with reading, stronger reading scores at IQ Academy. And that does make sense to me because those children have to do a lot of reading, a lot of independent work. They do become strong readers and it shows there. The area learning center, their goals were also to meet or exceed state standards on proficiency, and they're not there yet. So those are the things that their, as a team, is also working on. The Kennedy School also had ambitious goals in the middle level. They were looking to achieve 12% or greater than the state average. And the high school, 15%. If you looked down at the numbers down there, I'm pretty impressed with the science scores. All of the science grades, 5, 8, and high school were able to succeed there. And then some reading in math grades as well. Just to note that that high school science test, that's a life science test. So students take that towards the end of their biology year, whenever they choose to take biology. So it doesn't say a particular grade. And that eighth grade, I just love that eighth grade science school. That just has come through so solid for us for several years. And I know it takes many teachers to get up to that point, but we have one teacher who teaches all those sections. That's something to be very grateful about. Page 10, the section on student growth toward career and college readiness. In the elementary grades, there isn't a particular program, but we do work to have students develop good work habits and attendance and those sorts of things. But by the time they get into eighth grade, we have a local plan called the Otter Success Plan. And that plan is, it's a structure. It's a vehicle that students have to check things off the list there, and they're responsible to enter things into their plan. We have a softwood program called NOMIANS through the counseling department and through various courses. The activities of the Otter Success Plan are embedded in various coursework so that students do different things throughout their high school career. For example, one year, they do a lot of exploring. There's the time through high school where they have to make resumes. There's a time where they do research on various careers and experiences after high school, that sort of thing. And that information for students all goes into their own individual plan for college and career. In our high school, we have, there are some examples there in the third paragraph of ways that our curriculum and our programming encourages students to do some exploring for college and career. I highlighted the collaborative program with LB Homes and Pioneer and M State to get a certified nursing program established. And that's been very good for the students who have participated, very good for those agencies as well. We also have the STEM Academy, which involves a lot of community involvement for fundraising and updating our programs. And those are two examples of areas where the community has a shortage of more course. And so they've been very supportive of us offering opportunities to students who might have an interest in and a skill and a, I guess, strength to work in those areas. Component four of this report has to do with some sort of review and evaluation of curriculum. We do have a pretty well-established program to review curriculum on an eight-year cycle in our district. And the bottom of page 10 talks about the various steps in that process. We do have a, this is another advisory committee on page 11, our district curriculum advisory. You'll see quite a length of lengthy list here of people who come in once a month and they listen to reports, talk to teachers, give us opinions about what we might do. You see Herney sits at that, those meetings every month and is the communication back and forth between that committee and the school board. So I want to thank those community people who served three-year terms and some of them choose to serve another three years and are with us for six years. We've had some people even take a break and come back and do it again. And they're not necessarily parents, they're community people who are interested. This last year, we implemented new curriculum for world languages in French and Spanish in the high school, and then music classes all across the district. One of the biggest changes for both of those groups was the updated use of technology, curriculum that required more immersion into technology. And then this last school year, we also finished up the plans for many subjects to implement new curriculum just in September of this year. And those subjects are listed toward the autumn. So we're just starting with our dates for industrial technology, business, FACS, the auto program, agriculture, art, and computer literacy. So next year at this time, we'll have some more reports about what they have accomplished with one year of experience there. The end of that section talks about the teacher and administrator evaluation plans. Those have not changed. We continue to be on a three-year cycle there and follow our systems of evaluation for Page 12, component four, mentioned several of the programming ideas and things that students can be involved in to support their academic goals. And it might be a surprise to some people how many things there are. There are many things listed at the top here. We have response to intervention for reading and math for children who need more support there so that they can get up to level and move back to their grade level. Reading court tutoring is one-on-one help for primary children. Title I services for reading and math for children in kindergarten up through V4. We have a homework help room in this building that helps students, some during the day need extra support, but before and after school as well. An integration and diversity program. Star Math is for students in the Kennedy School here who need an extra math. Those students actually get a double, they have regular math and then go to Star Math two times a day. And we have similar programs for reading. We also have our area learning center. We have individual learning plans for students who go to the IQ School, the offline school. There's middle school academic challenges for children and families who want extra things to enrich the day for their students. Some students are invited to come to Saturday morning school if they need to catch up so that they can get back on track. Just numerous things listed there. Page 13, our teachers work together in small groups called professional learning communities. They're collaborative groups that are organized by grade level or by subject area. And the root purpose of those is to improve instruction. Sharing with each other what works, what doesn't work, how do we know that students need more, how do we know they have it so we can move on? And those typically meet once a month, those groups. The component six is where this report may seem a little bit repetitive because here's where we have to ascertain that the district has a budget to support all of these things and that they are committed to supporting all these things. And so we have to report on those six goal areas once again. So I tried to pick out things that maybe haven't been mentioned earlier. So children ready for kindergarten. There's a note there that the district participates and then collaborates with Head Start, with the United Way Child Visitor Program. On page 14, county caring connection, family, if it's anything that we can do to help children be more prepared with entering kindergarten. The district doesn't do this alone. There's a lot of community work and the resources that happen together. The district programming for preschooler includes early childhood programming. That's families, children, and their parents come to those things. Duplicate account, some children came to multiple things with their families. But 854 times a child came to send this program, then 685 parents. So those are admirable numbers, I think. The Otter Preschool served 145 children. There is some assessment that goes on in the preschool that is shared with parents at conferencing. And here's another place where our district has an advisory committee. We have community people who are interested in preschool and they want to have a voice and give us some guidance. Sometimes they're professional people, sometimes parents, just community people who aren't the best for our preschoolers. On page 15, there's detail there for two years about the various student groups that were required to track. And there are various ethnic groups, the all-student group, children who qualify for free and reduced-price lunch, special ed, those sorts of things. And you'll see the goal for the state is when it's all students, they're looking for 90%. 90% being proficient on reading and math tests and no lower than 85% for any particular group. So we do have some room for growth there. It is a challenge to get to that point because the children change every year. It's not the same children that we track. The fifth graders this year are not the same ones that we had last year. So it's hard to maintain and then increase by multiple percents. And we do have to set our goals. If you look at, look at the top one there, math, all students. All across the district, we have 59.8% of students being proficient. It's simple math to figure out what do we have to do to get to 90. And then that creates the goal for every year. That's how we end up with those 15, 16 percentage points of growth. And then down at the bottom of page 15, we're to have all students college and career ready by graduation. And there are some examples there about ways that we do that. We do have some honors coursework in grade nine and 10 in English and Science. In the math department, students can start to accelerate starting in grade seven and move on. There are numerous college credit opportunities inside this building. Students can also go to a college in the post-secondary options. We have AP courses, advanced placement courses here that have tests at the end where students can earn college credits to advance themselves. And students who participate in the STEM Academy, the project lead, the wing courses also have tests that if they score well enough, they can earn college credit. So lots of opportunities for students to overlap into their college years. There are also some experiences with mentorships and internships for high school students. That's a program that we're hoping to develop. Staff development, we haven't talked about that one. That's on the bottom of page 16 and the top of 17. We have a group of teachers and administrators who work on staff development, making plans for professional development days, reading and combing through applications of teachers who want to attend various workshops or conferences and making decisions about how to best distribute the resources that we have so that we can reach the goals that the district has. And then down in the bottom of 17, the state does expect us to be attentive to equitable access to excellent teachers. That means that we can't just randomly assign people. We need to be very mindful about putting teachers with the right skills, with the right students. We have to be careful about teachers who are inexperienced, not all being off on their own. They need to be put with people who have experience and work with mentors so that all children who come to us have access to the very best instructional situation of experienced teachers and teachers who are successful in their profession. So you'll see some information there about the qualities of our teachers. In our district, we have a lot of experienced teachers. Almost 75% of our teachers have 10 years or more of experience, though we've hired several new teachers in the last couple of years. We're still pretty seasoned. In the detail that I've been reading and studying for this report, our district, when we look across the state of poverty levels, the state divides school districts into four quartiles. We're not in the lowest poverty. We're not in the highest. We're in the middle. And that makes a difference in how we can program and what we are working with. We're very middle of the road here in what our district is comprised of.
For the financial wherewithal, you mean?
I mean, we don't have the poorest children. We don't have the other, our student body is very moderate. We're not extreme in any way.
One of the things I'd read recently too commented about how the percentage of our staff that has master's degrees, which too, I think, adds to a lot of the.
Roughly half.
Any questions for Carrie Thompson about our World's Best Workforce report?
Carrie, can I just comment on that page 17 down on the bottom there?
Yes.
As far as the enrollment by ethnicity includes, I think we might have a type on Hispanic.
Yes, it's 3.3.
Any other questions or comments for Carrie Thompson? If not, then we will vote to accept this report in our regular board meeting. Thank you so much, Mrs. Thompson. Thank you so much, Mrs. Thompson. And with that, please stand and join us for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a routine and justice for all.
Thank you. And now I'll call this regular school board meeting for any kind of school district number five forty-four to order. And the first... My aim of business is to establish our forum.
Nellie Cole.
Here.
Blaine Danielson. Here. Matt Lemke. Absent. Steve Bigasaw.
Here.
Natalie Knutje. Not here. Missy Hermes.
Present.
We have a forum.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion on the agenda? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. All right, that's approved. And we would like to just pause for a moment to acknowledge and thank Jennifer Dumer for her donation of two trumpets to the KSS Music Department, to thank Otter Tail Power for a generous donation of three-ring binders and paper, and thank Craig Hebert for his donation of a flute to the Kennedy Secondary School Music Department. So thank you for those contributions. Moving forward, we'll start with board reports. And our guest tonight's Deb Suter, who's gonna give us some information about student trip to France, request for two twenty twenty.
Well, thank you for allowing me to present my next trip to France. I've been entitled at France twenty. Already starting our planning process for the next trip. You know, I pulled a quote from Matt Long. He has a travel blog about the value of travel. And he says that what I love most about learning a new language is learning about the culture, the history, the cuisine. You can't learn that subject area without touching on those. And so, of course, when you travel to those places and firsthand have experience seeing various sites that you've talked about, sampling different types of cuisine, and of course, ordering it and conversing with the people in the language, it just pulls everything full circle for my students. So the trip that I am proposing, we are going to have a parent meeting tomorrow night. It's based on input from my previous group. They expressed their favorite things on the last trip were when we got to visit in the smaller towns. So this one has a little bit more focus on visiting the smaller towns in south of France. I have several students interested in arts. And so if you have, I think Elaine, you were able to give this out?
Yep, they, well, yes.
So if you have that in your packet of information, the itinerary shows you in their booklet, I believe, a little map of where we start off, perhaps. You can view that. If not, I'll describe it. It's a nine-day tour. And the dates I'm proposing are June eighth through the sixteenth. And so we will start in Paris. We'll spend three nights there. We will also be able to visit the Palace of Versailles or Monet's Garden, which is in Giverny. From there, we will take the TGV, the very fast train, to go to the south of France. And we will stop first in Avignon and we'll get to see the famous Pont du Garde and other Roman areas. The Pont du Garde is the site of a Roman archadoc, two thousand years old. Pretty amazing. So then this gets into the area of Picasso's inspiration in Van Gogh, you know, the Provence area. So then after that, we'll end up after two nights in the Provence city. Then we will go to the Riviera and spend those last two nights either in Nice or, not Monaco, but we get to visit Monaco. We also get to go to a perfumerie. And many of my students are excited about that. And that's in the city of Es. This will be my ninth tour. I did the counting. I think I have chaperoned one hundred students plus. So I'm pretty proud of that. I'm pretty excited that my students embrace this opportunity. And of course, a trip of this magnitude is, will be expensive for those students. And I understand that, but I still want to offer the opportunities for those that would like to do it. So the cost of the trip is three thousand seven hundred dollars, but if they enroll by a specific date, I believe it's November thirtieth, so that's just coming around the corner actually, then there will be two hundred dollar discount there. I also require that the students are proficient in two years of foreign language study. And also, I had passed these out just at the beginning. I don't know if you, I gave them to Elaine, I don't know if you got them, but the Student Code of Conduct, two parts, rules for the trip before, during, so that everyone is clear on my expectations. We go with the EF company because they provide a really good experience. We're able to join forces with other students from other schools, so that becomes a rich experience for my students as well. I'm looking at a group of nine to twelve. I have a smaller group. Last year's group was nine. And there will be two adults. It'll be either a student parent or another faculty member with myself. And then, of course, they have their tour guide that goes along with. Fundraising, we will do our usual Crep sales. And we found some other ones that were pretty lucrative last time around. And that just supplements the expenses for meals, additional expenses we need to tip our tour guide, as well as transportation from here down to the cities. So the fundraising takes care of those extra expenses prior to travel. Cancellation policy, I've always had a question about that. I just write on the form per EF policy. They have a really firm policy and it's written in their brochure. Therefore, parents and students, they enroll, are aware of, you know, if they would have to cancel so many days before, they would yield X amount of dollars. So it's pretty much spelled out at the first meeting. That is pretty much what I had. Are there questions?
So for a two-year foreign language student to go on this trip, what grades would that be?
Well, the students will be tenth graders and eleventh graders. I might have a twelfth grader, but I don't think so. These are students that I currently have right now. So the majority will be tenth graders and eleventh graders. Good question.
You know, it seems like you have this, you know, ninth time probably you've been to the school board also. You have this sound pretty good to provide us the information that we normally would request.
Well, I hope, I hope I have covered all the bases. That if you have any particular questions, then we'll have the parent meeting and take over there.
All right.
This would be put on the December agenda.
Okay. Yes, thank you much for coming and mentioning, and thanks for coordinating a great experience.
It's, they just love it. It's great for them. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, next we will call upon Derek Abrams to give us our fall activities update.
All right. Good evening. We, I feel that we had another successful fall season. Due to sports, obviously, they probably didn't finish as well as they wanted, but at the same time, when you look at what our purpose is and our goals as a department and as teams, I felt that we did. And I just gave you some of the things which I normally do. It's pretty close. I added a couple of things on the back that I normally don't have. But participation, when you look at the numbers, very pleased. We're, as a high school, we are at about the smallest we've been, and we're gonna grow now. But at our, we're kind of at our low point numbers-wise, but that hasn't really impacted our activities. Those have all maintained. They're all very healthy. I know there's some that would always take more. You know, I think you could always add another twenty, thirty people to a football team, for example. But I truly believe a lot of that too is the actions of this board, allowing us to have some of those seventh and eighth grade coaches back in there and things where every level is getting coached up right now and been hearing all positive things. And that, kids talk to each other and that's really helping with these numbers. So we had just over three hundred that participated in fall sports alone. Some of those numbers are some seventh and eighth graders that participated up, like cross-country and soccer, tennis, things like that, swimming. But that, those numbers were reflected in the past three years as well. So it's the same, I use the same thing for the last four years. And you can see the comparison. The encouraging thing to see there too isn't just the total numbers, but two things. One, the numbers we had this year, except for boys soccer, and that was only by one. They haven't fluctuated by more than five in four years. There's not one number here for two thousand eighteen that's the lowest number in the last four years. So, and the other real encouraging thing is, you know, football is probably the most driven by numbers. And we had seventy-one middle schoolers. That's just seventh and eighth grade. We had over forty seventh graders out for football when the past few years we've had seventeen or eighteen for each grade, barely trying to fill the team. So again, being able to get those additional coaches down there to work with those kids, I know we're working really hard to make sure that they can continue that path. So some very encouraging numbers there. Sportsmanship awards for the fall, volleyball received it this year. But I wanted to add this, this was the updated numbers. That's right on the CLC website. And it gives the total for all the schools in the CLC. And Brainerd leads with eighty-six. Fergus Falls is second with eighty-one. But please note that we've only been in the conference for thirteen years. This goes back twenty years. So our average, and I, the closest, Brainerd and Soccer Rapids, who's only been in there sixteen years, they average about four to four point two per year of these sportsmanship awards. We're up over six. So it's been consistent all the way through. And to have, be within five of Brainerd, who leads us in only thirteen years, says a lot about our teams, our coaches, and our programs over the past thirteen years since we've been in the CLC. And we've competed quite well too. And it's not that we haven't. You can see, you can read a lot of names I added on here just for the record so you have it. CLC Performers of the Week by week, various sports represented. On the back, the all-conference and honorable mention. And this applies to everything except for football, which is district, of course. So the ones in bold, and I've listed there, are all-conference. And those get voted on, it differs by sport. Some, it's voted on by how you do, like cross-country and swimming, there's no voting. It's just, you get this place, you're all-conference. You get these places, you're honorable mention. You don't get those places, you're nothing. So, but all the other ones are voted by all the coaches and things like that from the other schools. And you can see who was honorable mention. Football, they do it a little bit differently. They do it by district. We had four players that were honorable mention. But even more importantly, we had six players that were academic all-district, and that's not easy for a district. They upped it a little bit, it's three point seven GPA. And it's various grades there. It's not just seniors. It's, we got a couple of younger kids in there too already, so saying a good example for the younger guys. But we had six of them that had three point seven or higher and were academic all-district. State tournament participants, girls cross-country, Aspen Rhodey, who's just a seventh grader, and Emily Nuss, junior. They are, they both ran, four-sport ran very well down at the cross-country meet, drove down there and watched them, and it was fun to see. That's, it's pretty intense, twenty minutes there. Girls swimming, just wrapped up here on Friday. And we had Madison, Avery, Julia Swanson, Emily Carlson, and Ella Childs were in the two-hundred medley relay. Madison was also in the one-hundred backstroke. And then Ella Childs, Emily Carlson, Madison, and Emma Caperitz won the two-hundred free relay. So all of them qualified for state. Maddie made it in the backstroke to the finals and finished eleventh in the state. And then the last thing, which again, we're most proud of, in the CLC, they have what's called a scholar-athlete. And just this fall, we had twenty-six scholar-athletes. To be a scholar-athlete, you have to be a senior, you have to have a three point four GPA or higher, and you have to let her in that sport. And we had twenty-six scholar-athletes this fall. And so, very impressed with that. Any other questions or anything else you'd like me to cover from the floor? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Continuing on with the reports, then, we will move next to my reports.
I actually have some from Natalie.
Oh, okay.
Okay, just a real quick one here on wellness. I wasn't able to attend the last meeting, but Natalie was there. Things they participated, their walk to school day on October tenth. KSS applied for a bike-friendly status. Food service, they're working with food service to work with more salads. The webpage is listing more nutritional things. We're adding more fruits and vegetables, things like fresh zucchini, snow peas, baked potatoes, all those types of things. Looking at ideas to explore wellness incentives for worksite wellness. Fergus Falls District is participating in the Thrive Initiative. We, in fact, we had a number of students that attended that. And they actually are going to be sending out Reminds through the Remind app. So, and then they're going to, people are supposed to respond with their three good things of the day, and it'll all come into a spreadsheet. And then they'll start analyzing, do some analyzing with the spreadsheet and report out on that. You know, and January eighteenth, we're bringing in Dr. Jill Nelson on just mental health and being positive and taking care of yourself mid-winter semester break. So there's Natalie's report.
All right. Thank you, Natalie slash Carrie. Okay, and now I'll go ahead with my additional responsibilities. The Special Education Cooperative last month had very little additional information, but just a review from the annual, some of the annual topics such as child student count, which is a big deal because it establishes money, funding for the cooperative, and that's in December. I don't recall anything else pretty well. What was the other good topic? I can't recall.
Yeah, I think that was the big one, I was...
That was the big one. Right, okay. Okay, and then Region One, no additional, no additional significant information there, just monthly operations of that board. Finance Committee hasn't met. We'll dig in a little bit later tonight, looking at a lot of stuff. And then Activities Committee has not met. As far as Negotiations Committee, we had one group, the Para-Professional settled, and another group that is still continuing to work on the contract, which is about special education parents. So, any questions? And we'll scoot right on to Melissa Hermes for your reports.
Okay, thank you. Staff Development Committee, that we met on November fifth. And that fund is now down to around seven thousand dollars. So a lot of teachers going to, and pairs too, planning on staff development, going to different conferences and so on. With curriculum, the Curriculum Review Advisory Committee met last week, and we heard reports from the math departments. And of course, we're still waiting for the legislature to update the math standards. It's been, I think it's about three years past when those standards should have been updated. So that's why their curriculum is still on hold, why we haven't purchased new curriculum for math yet. Let's see, we also had reports from the Fax Department, and there was concern from some of the people at that committee about the possible loss of the CAD lab for the, that department. But it's a space issue, and so that was something that was discussed. Let's see, Catherine Anderson gave a great report on her work-based learning, and that was very interesting for us to hear about. This is what I, the quote I wrote, it's not, it's about, it's, it's different from what's just happening in the classroom, it's also what's happening in the workforce. And she called it experiential learning, which I thought was a great way to describe it. And then we also heard about the World's Best Workforce Report, the same one that Carrie presented tonight. Let's see, there are still some spots open on that committee if people in the public would like to be on the Curriculum Review Advisory Committee. They're welcome to contact the school district.
Very well. Any questions for Missy? Thank you. Thank you. Wayne Edelson.
Uh, meet and confer, we actually have a meeting slated for, uh, next Tuesday, uh, three forty I believe, so, um, and that will, uh, main objection to that is, uh, we start working on next year's calendar, so, um, that'll take place. Buildings and grounds, um, yes, I didn't discuss with Mark, but I, I think we're sitting pretty good, no, no major concerns and no big surprises of anything, so we're good. And as far as the five forty-four, we met last week, last Thursday. Um, a big thing coming out of there, not a cool lot, but, uh, they're working through their marketing group, uh, led by Mary Dolan, um, kind of a rebranding they're coming out with. They have, they haven't fully come out with it yet, so I probably shouldn't say too much on it, but, uh, look for, uh, kind of a new branding on, uh, their letterheads and mailing and differently like that. Um, kind of compare it to, uh, when you see the Nike symbol, you know it's Nike. They're hoping to come out with their own logo, so, uh, when you see it, you know it's the five forty-four foundation and, uh, so, uh, that'll be, uh, something for, for folks to be looking forward to and, uh, it'll be pretty exciting when they come with that. So, uh, other than that, that's all I've got.
All right. Any questions for Blaine? Okay, Mr. Vigasa.
Um, I'm actually happy I get to talk about stuff this time. Usually my report is, hmm, there's nothing more. So, um, well, we had an election recently and, uh, some, some changes happened in our, in our own legislature. Um, the one that I'm, well, I mean, that educators in general should be particularly excited about is our new governor, um, who, whether you're Republican or Democrat, he is, uh, education is one of his top priorities. He was, uh, educated for twenty years in a, in high school. Um, and he's got, he's got a lot of plans, um, you know, for education, um, making the calculation for per pupil money that student, that, that districts receive to be a lot more, uh, simple, so you don't need a master's degree to read the thing anymore. Um, one of his, that's one of his plans. He's also, he's, he, with the special ed, um, funding gap in a big, it being a big issue, he's, he's looking to close that gap, uh, so that special ed kids receive more funding. Um, let's see here, if I can read my writing here. Um, he supports, he supports a universal pre-K, he supports, uh, two years education paid for the first year, couple of years of post-secondary. Um, and there's a few, if you go to his website and look at, there's a lot, I don't want it to sit and gush over him the whole time, but, um, if, if you're in education, like I said, you should be pretty excited. The, the, the House flip-flopped from, uh, Republican to Democrat, basically the same numbers. It was seventy-seven, fifty-seven Republican prior to the election, now it's seventy-five, fifty-nine Democrat. And the Senate is now just one, um, seat to the red, so there's thirty-four Republican, uh, thirty-three Democrats. So, um, you know, if I'm a, a governor that's a Democrat, I should be pretty excited about these numbers, you know, in terms of getting some things done. Um, and, um, let's see, there is also, uh, some information about the, uh, the special ed, um, you know, it, it isn't a big spotlight right now. Not only is there a gap in funding, but also it's just super complex. Like Minnesota has so much paperwork that has to be filled out and done, uh, that's over and above, I believe, the federal, uh, required. So the new Ome district, this, the new Ome district is, is kind of spearheading to make that a little bit easier and pushing, trying to push legislation for that. So, um, so that's, that's, it's a good year for special ed folks to just, uh, you know, to, uh, have it be simpler, maybe get a little money eventually. Um, I did look at some of the, the bond referendums that were passing and failing and just, I'm, I'm more can, I'm more curious about like the, you know, the percentages, like are we getting more bonds to pass? Um, actually about sixty percent of bonds in that report that was sent out and it was actually in the, the, the legislation, the, the MSBA, um, advocate website talked about. About sixty percent of bond referendums failed here and only about fifty-four failed in twenty sixteen. So what I was more wondering about is that with the farmers getting a, a break on their taxes, um, is that, is that, um, does that matter? And I, and I guess, I, I couldn't find a way to break it down between rural and metro, be interesting. Um, but anyways, that, that's just, uh, a bit of my report. So it was an exciting, exciting month.
All right. Any questions for Stephen? We'll move on to a report from Superintendent S.
Yes, a few items here. First of all, uh, on behalf of the school board and, and administration, Blaine, we're certainly, you and your family have our sympathy on the passing of your father and, and, uh, appreciate you being here, uh, and, uh, we wouldn't have a quorum right now if you weren't in, no, but, uh, really appreciate that you talked about all your father said, uh, this is what he would want and, and you to carry forward, so, um, thank you for being here. Uh, also like, I'd like to compliment, uh, Mr. Mackey over here, we have one of the most outstanding Veterans Day programs in the area. It is amazing and I know Dean has a passion, uh, for, for that and I think it has a lot to do with his father and, and, uh, it, uh, just very nicely done and, and I, my favorite is when, when the dancers interpret a song, it's, it's just wow. It's something very unique to our, our community. Uh, our, our student councils, uh, or classes, I should say, are being very generous. Uh, Mr. Tilke and his student council, high school student council brought one thousand three hundred and thirty-four pounds of food to the food shelf today, which is a few pickup loads, which is great. And then I also, uh, want to compliment the seventh graders, um, working in Katie Hechek's classroom, uh, and along with, uh, community education, they worked at Service Foods and got a lot of donations and they were all brought to the media center over at the high school, yeah, or excuse me, the, the old high school, and they put together packets for the backpack program, which is, which is awesome. The numbers are up in, in the, in need for the backpack program, so they were doing very well and helping with that. And I, I just wanted to, uh, look at your calendars, it's, uh, the first round of music concerts are coming up, so, uh, some of the fun ones too, when you, when you coming up on the holiday season, so, uh, take a look at the calendars there. So that's what I.
All right, very good. We continue to move forward with our general consent items and, uh, for consideration of approval in that category are the minutes from our last regular school board meeting of October twenty-second and we had a special school board meeting on November fourteenth. And then we have some personnel activities, so if you wouldn't mind, Elaine?
Absolutely. Um, support staff resignations, Kayla Schaefer, noon hour supervisor, and she'll be taking a cafeteria position instead, so she's not leaving us. Nicole White, same situation, she was a noon hour supervisor and she is taking a special ed position with us. Um, and then Kristi Obawa, she is ECFE classroom aide and she is, um, leaving us at this time. And as far as the hires, uh, Allison Rismowen, uh, in cafeteria, she's switching from a dishwasher to a cook cashier and increased hours. And then I talked about Kayla and Nicole, Kayla Schaefer and Nicole White taking different positions. And then Cheryl Anderson, she is taking a noon hour supervisor position at Kennedy Secondary School. And last, we have a leave of absent request for Nancy Dahl, elementary teacher at Adams, and that would be effective, um, from eleven-five to the end of the school year. And in, under new business, you'll be seeing a request for two special ed pairs and hires of two additional special ed pairs due to enrollment of students. And, um, I'm looking at, kind of into the future, we'll be, uh, requesting additional special ed pairs due to additional student enrollments and you'll see that in December. So, uh, just a heads up to anyone that's watching, um, please look for postings for special ed pairs if you're interested in applying, please do so, we just really encourage that and need that, so, that would be it.
All right, very good. And bills and treasures report, uh, Blaine, will you be reporting on that?
Yep, yep, I'll take care of that personally. Natalie and I met with Mark, uh, earlier tonight for the meeting and, uh, one point eight plus in bills and everything looked good, so recommend we pay those. We're, uh, sitting very good financially, uh, nine point six million in the bank, so, uh, Mark had said that's probably as high as we're gonna get now, we'll start seeing a, a few more expenses coming in, but, uh, financially, we're sitting very well. Um, checked with Mark, our fund balance is about twenty percent, so, uh, as high as it's probably been for quite a while too somewhere. We're, uh, sitting very good as a district right now.
And then the last item, uh, to include in this general consent is a two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty agreement between the school board and Fergus Falls Para Educators Association. I'm looking for, uh, motion to approve the general consent item. So move.
I'll say, I'll say.
Missy for, and second by Blaine, any discussion on any of these items? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, general consent is approved. Under old business, we have three new ISV five four four school board policies. Uh, these were, um, uh, mentioned at the last meeting and, um, dispersed to the board members for review. The policies include, uh, number six fifteen, testing accommodations, modifications and exemptions for IEPs, section five oh four plans and LEP students. Number six eighteen, assessment of student achievement and, and policy number six nineteen, staff development for standards. So is there a motion to, uh, approve these through three new school board policies?
So move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion on the policies? Carrie, none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, that is approved. Um, I'd look for a motion to appoint a surrogate parent for a student with disabilities.
So move.
A second to that motion?
Second.
All right, and, uh, there really is no room for discussion on this, it's a function of the board to, uh, anonymously appoint, uh, advocate for a student if it is deemed appropriate. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, that is approved. And, uh, I'll entertain this motion of the first reading of the fiscal year eighteen school district's financial audit. Entertain the motion first and, um, oh, no, we won't entertain any motion, we'll just have, we'll just have Mark pass and review it for us, that's right. And this will be on our next meeting for approval or disapproval, so.
You have a packet in here that says, I Bailey in the bottom right corner. This is actually pages that I took out of the audit report, uh, we don't have the physical copy yet, we have just electronic. The, uh, I think it's like seventy-eight pages long, but I have reduced it down to a few pages here just for, for you to review. Um, if you look on page, actually page three, two and three is the letter that you get from the, the auditors and page three is highlighted there and it's the opinion. And that's what you pay your audit for, is to hear the words that say that, uh, the statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position and the governmental activities. So that's, that's a good sentence to have in there, that means there's a room.
Most are going to jail.
Not yet at least. But anyway, page five then, reassuring, reassuring, huh? Are just some key financial highlights that the auditors, uh, uh, put out there, like our fund balance went up by a hundred and twenty thousand. Uh, it may have gone up a hundred and twenty thousand in total, but you're gonna see when you get the, the full audit is our operations went way up, our capital outlay went way down. We, capital outlay went down because we wanted it to go down. We had a number of projects that we were finishing up, so, all in all though, that, that's all in one fund, so it only looks like a hundred and twenty thousand dollars that we went up on a thirty million dollar budget. Uh, general, uh, food service went up by about seventy-one thousand, community service went up by a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, debt service up by seventy-two thousand. I'll, I, I always like it when it goes up, 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 because that means better financial stability for us. Uh, then we go to page eight and nine. I threw these numbers out there because, uh, you'll see a thing called a financial analysis of the district. And, uh, what it says is the net position of the district went from a positive four million down to a deficit of two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And that's kind of one of those things where you go, what? How can you do that when you just mentioned we have ten, nine million dollars in the bank? Well, there's an implementation of a thing called the GASB seventy-five. GASB stands for Governmental Accounting Standards Board. And what they did was they changed some rules that said basically that anything that TRA, the teacher retirement account, and PERA, the public employees retirement account, have to be reflected in the fund balance of the school district and finances. And so there was like six million, I think it's on the next page, uh, where it says the net pension liability of the district is forty-four million dollars. And you go, holy cow. But of course, they don't include all the revenue that's gonna be flowing in over the lifetime of all these people that that accumulates to. It also talks about having an OPEB liability, which is other post-employee benefits, which, and here it says it's a million dollar liability, but that liability is really, if for the case of Fergus Falls, amount of health insurance benefit that retirees get by having a lesser cost than what if they had gone out on the marketplace. It isn't actually a liability of the school district. And the reason it isn't a liability in the school district is because our retirees pay for their health insurance, the school district doesn't pay for it. But that's what happens, so I just wanted to point out that there's, in fact, when you get the audit report, like I said, there's seventy-eight pages, I'm guessing somewhere like a third to a half of it is talking about pensions and OPEB liabilities and it's, it's astounding and yet none of it really pertains to us. The school district has no control over the retirement funds at all. It's state-created, state-mandated, state-decision, state-funded, and yet we have to show their liability on here. So, interesting information.
Right, to the uninformed, it would be completely mind-boggling.
It, it is. Uh, page ten is probably Matt Lenkey's favorite page, he likes to see how we.
It's not my favorite page, but reality.
It's our reality. Uh, one of the things that, uh, I'd like to point out is that, uh, we are four hundred and thirty-fourth out of four hundred and ninety-nine school districts in terms of funding per student. And yet, we have a nice fund balance and yes, we pay our employees probably better than most in this area and we have high test scores. So we're very, very efficient and that's hats off to our staff and our board and everybody else that works on that. Um, next page after that, page seventeen shows our fund balances. Uh, there's approximately about five point eight million in our general fund and, uh, you can read across there as where we're at. And then the, the last page, you also have to show that and I have a feeling this, this bad, this is what they call a finding, where the auditor says, we found something that the board should be aware of. And, uh, it says during the course of our engagement, we proposed material audit adjustments that would not have been identified as a result of the district's external, internal controls and therefore could have resulted in material with statement of the district's financial statements. And what they're referring to is an entry that they found while they were here, where our Mars report came through and that when they were here and they went, ha, we got this new information, so we'll book this new information and it was a significant amount of money. Well, I guess what I have to do then is make sure that I can intercept this information before the auditors are here in order to get, not get this finding. But I'm not too sure about that because the special ed co-op has the same exact language in their thing and their, their difference in their revenue was six hundred and sixty-seven dollars. So on a three and a half million dollar.
So it might be the trend for all audits this year.
Yeah, I have a feeling it's a trend for all audits, yes. So, but just, I wanted to point out.
It was new money coming in that wasn't yet noticed by.
Correct, it was additional money that went, that came into the district, so.
Yeah, these become less and less relevant.
Uh, and that's what my fear is, is that, uh, there's so much boilerplate in the audit that it's becoming unwritable. It's all stuff that's required from the regional.
But, very positive.
I just, I think it's outstanding that when you look at this page ten or that Matt's favorite page, that we're ranked four hundred and fifty-third out of four hundred and ninety-nine schools in, in our funding per student, what we get, I mean, that's just, it's amazing that we're as efficient as we are.
Very good. Any additional questions for the business manager? Any additional questions for the business manager? And you have a whole month to pepper them with whatever comes to your mind until we, well, December ninth meeting, I think, is when we'll review that again.
I'd prefer to have them pepper me with questions about the audit, not just whatever
comes to their minds.
Oh, yes, we'll try and stick with the audit. Oh, good. And moving right on, the next motion to entertain is a motion to approve the two thousand seventeen eighteen Fergus Falls Public Schools World's Best Workforce Report. Would someone offer that motion, please? So moved. All right, and a second?
Second.
All right, any discussions? We heard the report, right here tonight, folks, and had a nice explanation with it. Any commentary? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, we are approved. I was noticing it didn't sound as enthusiastic, that's what we're saying, Carrie, but we tried.
The board meeting like a pirate. Aye, there you go.
That's how a pirate says yes.
It is approved, and, and solid piece of work, thank you. Next, looking for a motion to approve a memorandum of agreement between our school district and U of M Crookston for the college and the high school program, this is something we do each year.
So moved.
All right, and a second?
I'll second you.
All right, I'll take Stephen on that one, and any discussion on that? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, there. Opposed, say nay. All right, that is approved. As Ms. Jenke indicated a bit earlier, we'll be looking for a motion to request two additional special education positions at six point five dollars a day, one at Cleveland, one at Kennedy, for hiring of two staff listed, Laura Vitenheimer and Lena Bowman. If someone is willing to make the motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any dis, any discussion on that?
Again, just due to two new students moving into the district, and like I said, it's December, probably will be another one as well, because meeting the needs of the students eighteen.
All right. Not really optional. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, that is approved. And then, we will move forward with the resolution authorizing issuance of certificates of election and directing the school district clerk to perform other election-related duties, whereas the board has canvassed the general election for the school board members on November fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen, now therefore be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District, number five forty-four, State of Minnesota, as follows. Number one, the chair and clerk are hereby authorized to execute certificates of election on behalf of the School Board of Independent School District, number five forty-four, for the following candidates, Missy Hermes, Melanie Cole, and Kirby Anderson, who have received a sufficiently large number of votes to be elected to fulfill vacancies on the board caused by expiration of term on the first Monday in January next following the election based on the results of the canvas. Number two, the certificate of election shall be in substantially the form attached here too. And number three, after the time for contesting the election is passed and the candidate has filed all campaign financial reports as required by Minnesota Statute, Chapter two hundred and eleven A, the clerk of the school board is hereby directed to deliver the certificates to the persons entitled thereto personally or by certified mail. Number four, the clerk is hereby directed to enclose with the certificate a form of acceptance of office and oath of office in substantially the form attached here too. Will someone offer the resolution and move for its adoption?
Well, if the resolution move for its adoption.
And a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Clerk, would you please take a roll?
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Blaine Danielson, yes. Matt Lenkey?
Yes.
Steve Vigasaw?
Yes.
Missy Hermes?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Very well, thank you. That concludes our agenda for our meeting this evening. We have our next regular school board meeting, same night, as we have some other outstanding information for the public, on Monday, December tenth. We will have a public meeting on technology plan and internet safety, a public meeting on Fergus Falls Public Schools taxes payable for two thousand and nineteen, and then that will be followed by our regular school board meeting. So, we'll stick around to work, and have a variety of topics there. Would someone offer a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Oh, I'll take Blaine for the adjourn, and Steve for a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, we are adjourned, thanks.